Will the clerks please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo. Councilmember Koreshi. Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Great. Thank you very much. I know Councilmember Koreshi and Councilmember Mayo will not be joining us this evening, so hopefully we will see Councilmember Smith soon. Looking at our agenda this evening, there are no changes. This week, tomorrow, many of us are going to the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference, and then many of us will return on Saturday for the Diwali Festival from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. in Langley Park Plaza at 8,001 New Hampshire Avenue, and I'm sure you'd be good to go attend that event. Next Wednesday, October 19th, we have a presentation from the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, Mr. Chuck Bean. For my colleagues on the council, just a reminder that we're actually going to eat a quick dinner before the meeting at 6:30 with Mr. Bean, so if you can be here at 6:30, that would be great. Then we have a voting session next week, a resolution providing for direction on conversion to LED street lighting, a single reading ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for construction of a bump-out and concrete pad to accommodate a bike-share station, a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase and installation of two bike-share stations, and a resolution providing for the appointments to the Noise Control Board. Yay! Then we have a work session, a presentation and discussion of the Grants Review Committee recommendations for FY '17 community grants, and a discussion of community partnership liaison. Then on the following week, on Wednesday, October 26th, we have visiting us, Dr. Pollard from the Montgomery, President of Montgomery College. That is also an evening that we will be convening a little earlier to have dinner, a light dinner with Dr. Pollard before our meeting, so people can pencil that in for 6:30. Then we have a voting session, a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of a wireless microphone system for the auditorium, a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of a security, door security hardware and ID software, a single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Xerox State and Local Solutions for the photo speed enforcement program. And then we will have a work session that evening, a follow-up conversation on police-community relations. On Wednesday, November 2nd, we have a first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code related to parking meter zones, and a single reading ordinance awarding the FY 2017 community grants. And then, don't forget that Tuesday, November 8th, is Election Day. The Community Center is not a polling place, so just remember that. For this election, November 8th, the Community Center is not a polling place. If you need to find out your polling place, please contact the Montgomery County Board of Elections. And on the web, it's 777vote.org. All right, why don't we begin this evening with any public comments on voting items? We have one voting item this evening, a resolution and support of funding for a paramedic at the Tacoma Park Fire Station. Any public comments regarding that? Okay, then we'll move on to general public comments. If you have any public comments, Mr. Lovellis will get you the microphone in a moment.
Right.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lovellis.
Okay, my name is Pat Lovellis, your official peace delegate, and I want to ask you people out there, if you've gotten notified all the 16-year-olds through the school system that they're eligible to vote, that they're registered to vote on the 8th, they can vote on local elections only, but this, I don't think is an election year. But I do would like to remind people that everybody else should be out there and voting, because this is a very, very important election. We don't, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know if we're gonna get a fool in office, or we're gonna get something good in office, but it's up to us. We chose the candidates during the primary election. If you don't like either one of them, you gotta ask yourself your question, did you vote? And did you get your friends to vote? If there's no to either one of them, then you're part of the problem. You've got to get out there and register to vote and vote, and do the same thing for your friends, too. That way, you are literally fighting for your country for what you believe in without even having to fire a shot, because today, we are 27 days away from election. You know, E-Day is 27 days away, and I want people to know that. That's one day shy of four weeks. I remember a scene like yesterday, I was telling people it was, what, 60-something days before the elections, and now it's only 27 days? That's gonna go by in a flash, so don't forget it out there. Get up off your tops and do what you need to do. Vote responsibly and vote conscientiously. And that's what we gotta do. We wanna, we gotta remember that people have died for our right to vote. People got shot in front of their own homes for their right to vote. People faced the Ku Klux Klan and were beaten to death for our right to vote, had their houses burned, crosses burned on their lawns just for suggesting it back in the day. And we gotta show our appreciation for what they've done for us. And the best way of showing our appreciation is getting up off our cans and registering to vote and voting. That's the best thing we can do. In Tacoma Park, we've led the way in many, many things. Let's lead the way in getting the largest number of people out voting for our country. Let's see what we can do on there. If anybody out there is watching, I'm talking to you people, too. Please, get out there, register to vote, and then vote, and vote with your conscience. Remember, vote, vote, vote. Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you, Mr. Lovellis. Great, and just to clarify, thank you, Mr. Lovellis, for talking about Election Day, but unfortunately, 16 and 17-year-olds cannot vote on November 8th. There are no local elections. Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? All right, then we have one thing for the record. We have a mayoral proclamation proclaiming October 14th, 2016, Hal Shea Day in Tacoma Park. Mr. Shea was an active part of the Tacoma Park community for over 26 years. He became business partners and advisor to Mark of Mark's Kitchen, and after teaching Mark English when he immigrated from Korea, Mr. Shea spent over 20 years providing employment opportunities and mentorship for many Tacoma Park residents, especially area youth and residents in need. Mr. Shea helped orchestrate many fundraisers for local charitable organizations and nonprofits at Mark's Kitchen, and he was a man of great humor and fun, and well-respected and loved in the community. And so, I would just like to, on behalf of the City of Tacoma Park and on behalf of our council, residents and staff, hereby proclaim October 14th, 2016, Hal Shea Day to honor the memory of Mr. Shea. Now, moving on to council comments? No comments? All right, Councilmember Kovar.
A few quick ones, and this is something that I just wanted to mention to the city manager, and these are things that relate, as is often the case, to our partners, WSSC, and also State Highway. So I understand that we can only ask, we can't demand, or we can demand, but we never know what they'll say. But there's a WSSC project coming up soon on Philadelphia Avenue, and there's a meeting scheduled for later this month on the 24th, so I hope everybody, in particular Ward 1, will attend that. There's some questions that have arisen about, in particular, paving and whether the curbs are going to be replaced and some of those issues, and we may get some of that at the meeting, but I'd be interested in what you can find out about that. A second thing is, I think I might have mentioned this briefly in another conversation, but the crosswalks at Park, the intersection of Park and Carroll Avenues, there's no signs that say there are crosswalks, which I think is one of the things that helps people know that they're there, and people tend not to stop as often as they should there.
It's across Carroll.
Right. There's two in that area where Park comes in. I think it would be useful just to have that sign as a state law stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. And then, I mentioned this to Public Works in an email today, but if you could check on it as well, there's a water leakage right at that site, which WSSC did an initial check on, and didn't seem to be quote-unquote "their" water. We don't know whose water it is, but right now it's a small leak, but if it froze, it would be bad, so I think that's something just to check on later. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. First, I have a question for the city manager. Is it possible that we can get an update from Washington Methodist University about their building on Maplewood? See if it is on schedule. I was by the site this past weekend. It didn't look like there were any problems, but it would be nice to hear from them. Also, there was a list that was circulated a number of months ago about crossing guards. Can we get an update on whether or not these new locations, we can have crossing guards, or if we need funding for them, or what's the best way to approach it? And then finally, I want to say that this past Sunday, I had the opportunity to speak to a number of Boy Scouts for their government merit badge. They had some great questions. They wanted to know about the Dog Park, when is it opening? They wanted to know about sustainability, how to protect the environment. So it was a really good meeting, and I want to thank Ward 5 resident, Dr. Marion McDorman, for hosting it. Thank you, Mayor.
I got drilled on Pepco the other day, my Boy Scouts, so. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I have a question for the city manager. A few weeks ago, and I don't rightly recall when, I raised a question about an issue that I was having with the SHA with regard to a section of Carroll Avenue between, well, near the, near University Boulevard. Erwin Mack, a resident who lives just across the street from the Tacoma Park Line, had written, we had, he and I had met with a District 3 engineer on February 29th, and we got about a number of improvements that we thought would be useful for that area. And basically, we got a letter back, I guess about four, five weeks ago, that more or less said that they couldn't do any of those things, one of which was putting a sidewalk in next to that gas station. And I think I mentioned it here three weeks ago, maybe, or four weeks ago, seeking some help from staff so that we can kind of, so it's just not residents, or just me interfacing with the SHA, because I think that they've made an error in their, in their decision, maybe an honest error, but an error nonetheless. I just wanted to know if there's any, if staff has had the time, and if it hasn't, I would understand, to look into this at all.
We have had some back and forth with SHA. They did claim that part of the right-of-way wasn't theirs, which we found ludicrous, but we're still, I think, waiting to see, you know, kind of a final determination of that. And we certainly believe that it is an appropriate place for a sidewalk. I don't have a final word on that at this point. I know there was kind of back and forth trying to determine ownership questions and that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have put, we have made a number of contacts.
Oh, you have? Okay, that, well, I'm glad to hear that. I just hope that if we reach, get some information back, you'll let me know.
Yeah. Yeah, I would love to have an answer on it. I don't yet.
Yeah, well, I understand how it goes with them. Also, we sought for them to replace a number of crosswalk indication signs at where Wildwood and Chester Street come together, which were taken out by an automobile accident, I don't know, four, five, six months ago, and we have not been able, for some reason, to get them to simply replace those signs. It's nothing new. These are just ones that were just literally taken out by the automobile accident. So it is a bit frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. Last week, we talked about Sergeant Thomas, who passed away in, was killed in Afghanistan after stepping on an IED. Reports were that Sergeant Thomas came from Tacoma Park, and we found out that he lived here for a year between college and enlisting, and he was an environmental activist while he lived here. His wife resides in Colorado Springs, and with the help of Congressman Chris Van Hollen's office, we're trying to get contact information to let her know that there were many people in sending their sympathies and condolences on the news of Sergeant Thomas's passing. In addition, our VFW, Post 350, is doing a fundraiser for the Special Operation War Fund. That's actually the place where Sergeant Thomas's family has asked for donations to go, and so if people were interested in that, the VFW is collecting money. This is a, donations will provide scholarships to children of special operatives killed or wounded in the line of duty. So if you need more information of that, you can contact the VFW. The other thing is a reminder regarding the 5K that will be this Sunday, the Long Branch 5K Run and Walk for the families of the Flower Branch apartment fire. It starts at 7:00 a.m. You can register and get more information at www.raceentry.com/race-reviews/discovery-long-branch-5k. Sorry it's so long. But please come. There will be an after-party, if you don't feel like running or walking, that you can participate in. I would also like to thank the students and faculty of the Don Bosco High School. I attended last Friday night their 10th anniversary, and it was a wonderful event. Actually, Captain Collington and myself went for a bit to meet some of the students and faculty there, so it was very nice for them. All right, and I think that's it. Next, city manager comments.
Thank you. I'll piggyback a moment on the Long Branch 5K. They will be closing a section of Sycamore Creek Parkway for that on Sunday, and then again, on Monday, the portion of Sycamore Creek Parkway underneath the Carroll Avenue Bridge will be closed temporarily for some cement work, so, or concrete work. So Sunday and Monday, you'll need to be diverted around Sycamore Creek Parkway within Tacoma Park in certain sections.
She can answer questions on that. Is the path open, too, on Monday, or are they closing the path as well as for pedestrians and?
I'm not sure, but my guess is that
They're closing the whole thing.
That they would close it. I'm not positive. I'm not sure exactly where the concrete's going up above. Follow-up from last meeting. Councilmember Kovar asked what data was available related to the use of the electric vehicle charging stations, and we periodically inquired. The stations themselves are not set up to record that information individually, so we have, however, done some analysis about the amount of electricity that is drained at BF Gilbert Park stations, because you don't have an air conditioner system or other kinds of things that are also associated with that. And so we have some hypothetical kind of extrapolations about the impact of the amount of use of the electric vehicle charging stations. And so if we assume that chargers are, that our chargers are experiencing the same use as at BF Gilbert, we could extrapolate that the stations combined are using about 245 kilowatts of energy per month, about $26.95 worth of electricity, saving 29 gallons of gas and 568 pounds of CO2. And it does seem to be increasing, so it's not a strong defined number, but it does, it does show progress.
So there are four stations, is that right?
I think there's more than that.
There's 14 total.
Yeah, there's 14.
Oh, there are? Okay. So, and just to be clear, for example, the one that's in the parking lot here, since that also is used for other, the electricity that goes there does
It's with the whole city building, yeah.
Power for the building, too. Right, so that's the harder one to do.
That's right.
So do we have a budget for this at this point, or is this, we're sort of seeing how it goes?
It's not very much money, so it's not, it's not really something that we're
And we were given the chargers for
Right, and it's a, right, so we're not, we don't have to pay for the improvements.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
A follow-up on the discussion that we had on bicycles on sidewalks and bike-share questions from last week. I've attached some very helpful answers provided by the planning staff, and I know that that subject will come back for discussion with the council, but some of the information is very helpful. Wanted to follow up, received several questions from council members about the community partnership program, so the kind of contract money that would go to community partners that's been authorized by the council, when this process would begin. What I have asked is for the department heads to identify the kinds of additional services or expanded programming that they would find helpful, that are consistent with council goals. That information's to get to me by the end of this month. When I consider those proposals, I'll identify kind of which things we should go out for, request for proposals for. I'll be having conversations with the council about that, but we would be moving forward on that within the next couple of months, hopefully have that before the end of the regular calendar year. Next year, we'll be able to do it a little more closely to the budget time, and because these are contracts, they're not just one-year type contracts. It can be longer. I wanted to give an update on the Pepco tree removal and pruning program. I did send this information out to the council this afternoon and to the Tree Commission. At the last week's council meeting, I reported on the city's request for Pepco to suspend tree removals and pruning for that week, while we gathered information on the trees remaining to be removed. We identified as staff, not the arborist, but other staff, four trees that we wanted an assessment of by a contract at arborist. The assessment was not able to be completed last week, so Pepco extended their suspension of activities in Tacoma Park. The assessment of the trees has now been done, and a fifth tree was added to be looked at by a resident who wanted a second opinion. Of those five trees, the contracted arborist concurred that four of them were, do present a hazard and should be removed. The one tree that he didn't agree to as a hat, was not, did not agree was a hazard, was a 28-inch oak at 6903 Prince George's Avenue. Pepco is ready to go back to removing the trees beginning next Monday. We're holding off on the one for 6903 Prince George's Avenue. There's some differences of opinion about that tree, so we're looking into it after we find out some more information from the property owner. At this point, I think that we do want to have this work go ahead and proceed. One of the things that we were alerted to was a potential claim against the city for not having a tree come down fast enough before it fell and hit a car and a house. And those are things that happen, so we live with it, but we also recognize that we have to manage our urban forest, and sometimes it means some of the trees have to come down. It's not easy to figure out the status of these trees, so I do have to rely on a trained arborist for those opinions, and I know Councilmember Schultz was looking at trees with big question marks as well. The best that I can do at this point is rely on trained arborists to give that judgment. I'm not, I'm not able to do that. I do want to send kudos out to Roz Grisby, and she's actually in the audience, for all that she did this past few weeks while the Housing and Community Development Director, Sarah Danes, was away on extended leave. Roz oversaw the day-to-day operations of the Planning Division and her own assignments, as well as keeping things moving department-wide. She really was very helpful, and give her extra kudos for her work for the city. And I will also be Thursday and Friday with the council at the Maryland Municipal League Conference. Any other questions?
No, all right. We have minutes to adopt this evening. We have minutes from September 12th and September 14th. Would someone like to move the minutes?
Some move.
Councilmember Seaman, do you have a second?
Sure.
Councilmember Schultz, any discussion or changes? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Nope, minutes adopted. All right, now we'll turn to our first, or only, and first voting item, a resolution and support of funding for a paramedic at the Tacoma Park Fire Station. There were some changes to this, so we have a salmon color sheet.
The salmon.
All right, and I just want to say thank you to our former colleague, Smith, Seth, sorry, Seth Grimes, for providing some comments that we've actually incorporated into the resolution. I don't know if the city manager wants to?
I think the deputy city manager's gonna take it. He ended up following up on that.
Great.
Sure, yeah. The changes to the version that was originally posted simply include changing the term "medic" to "paramedic." We did some research after some questions came about what the difference was. I'm very educated on it now. And we also added a "whereas" clause that And we also added a whereas clause that made a lot of sense to add, per the suggestion from former councilmember Grimes. In sum, there have been ongoing conversations for years between the city and Montgomery County about adding a paramedic on staff at the fire station in Tacoma Park. Currently, the Tacoma Park Fire Station is one of only two out of 35 in Montgomery County that don't have a paramedic on staff. And it's my understanding that we, Tacoma Park's Fire Station is slated to get one, but it's in an out year as part of a third and final phase of a phased-in approach to making a number of improvements. We feel that with the hospitals move imminent, that now it's as urgent as ever to urge the county council and the county executive to include funding for a paramedic in their fiscal year 18 budget. So this resolution does just that. It urges, on behalf of the City of Tacoma Park, the county to consider including funding for a paramedic in their fiscal year 18 budget.
Councilmember Schultz, you had a question?
Yeah, it's probably an obvious answer question, but when we say a paramedic, we're really talking about more than one person because the fire station, this is really a question, is open 24 hours a day. So that's two or three shifts a day, so you really.
Right, it's a position.
It's a position.
Right.
That's going to be filled continuously.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, just, I assume that was the answer.
Okay. Any other questions? No, well, thank you very much, the Deputy City Manager, for the last-minute research. I will also say that we've had the help of County Councilmember Mark Elbridge's office and working with our volunteer fire department on the resolution, so just wanted to mention that as well. All right, who would like to move this?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Smith, second. Any other questions or discussion?
No.
No, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? No, all right, we will do this and we'll write a nice cover letter and send it on off to the county council and the county's ex-office. Next, we have a work session, a briefing on parking management study, open houses, and a discussion of a housekeeping amendment to the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 13, Point 12 on parking meters.
Hello. My name's Eric Knossberg, I'm a planner in the Housing and Community Development Department. So I'm just presenting this item tonight. It's pretty straightforward and there's two parts. The first is an update on the ongoing parking management study that's started in 2015, about this time, or I guess in August, with some surveys and continued with a lot of analysis and some consultant-led work looking at parking inventory around the city. It's a comprehensive study, it's looking at the entire city with a focus on old Tacoma around the DC boundary near the metro and the commercial districts, but looking at everything from our residential parking permit system to meters enforcement, how parking is communicated online and in the wild. And we've been gathering a lot of feedback from the community and various stakeholders on the, throughout the project. We, you may recall, there was a presentation from our consultants in June of this summer outlining some of what they had discovered. And a presentation in the form of two open houses were held last week with the public, one in this building and one at the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. We had some folks attend, about 18, I think, in total, split between the two evenings. We were competing with the vice presidential debate one night, so that was something we had to deal with. But we got some interesting feedback and I've pulled up the web, website for the parking management study here. This is on our city website, this is the project page. And the information from the, from the meetings is available for download here. Folks can take a look at what was presented on these meeting boards. And we do have at the bottom of the page, an input form. We're looking for input from the community through November 7th. And this is the same kind of questions that we had at the public open houses. Basically, we're looking at three questions right now, which is sort of what of the list of things under consideration are priorities for the community? What are some other issues or hotspots that we may have missed or haven't been talked about so far? And also some suggestions on guiding principles that Tacoma Park City Council can consider moving forward on parking management. We have a lot of different things that we're doing when it comes to parking and like anything, there are trade-offs that we have to think about when we're moving forward. And so we're trying to get a sense from the community about, you know, as related to the city council's priorities for this fiscal year, what are some things they might be interested in seeing, or what is important to them. So we're encouraging folks to take a look at the material and give us some feedback. And the next steps for the project are to come back to council with a set of recommendations that's based on the analysis and the feedback we've been getting. We're expecting that, we'll probably be in early January, just given the schedules coming up and with some time to process all the feedback that we receive after November. So that's basically an overview of where we are in the study right now and what to expect moving forward. Yes.
What was the deadline on the survey again?
November 7th.
Okay.
Yeah, the information was posted on the 7th of October, which was Friday, so we were thinking like a month, 30 days of time to continue to gather input. And we are encouraging folks to use the, the form here, it's pretty easy to use and straightforward and makes it easier for us when everything comes in one place.
And just one question, and this might be for the Deputy City Manager. I know unfortunately, the person who's in charge of our social media has left the city, but have we posted this yet on Facebook and Twitter?
I think so, I think on Facebook at least.
Okay, I can look for it, all right.
We need to keep pushing it.
Okay.
Especially as we get closer to the November 7th.
Yep, great, thank you.
After the two meetings, was there a couple of things that rose to the top of important issues or what residents would like to see?
What, from what we heard, we haven't looked at all the comments that have come through online yet, but what we've, what I remember hearing at the meeting has been in line with what we've been hearing on this topic for over a year. There's been obviously some pressures related to some of the commercial, new commercial uses around Old Town, which have created some, some challenges in the residential neighborhoods. And, you know, I think we hear a lot of different particular issues and none of them were particularly surprising or new. So I guess the answer is no, nothing in particular.
Have you guys looked at, you know, for some of the big restaurants like Republic or Bus Boys and Poets, if valet parking would, would help?
I believe the old Tacoma Business Association may have looked at this in previous years and just found that economically it wasn't something that, that, that part of the, that commercial district was, wasn't really there yet, I think, yeah.
And I believe, I can't speak to Bus Boys and Poets, but I know Republic did a pilot, I think, one weekend or something, or a couple of weekends.
Yes, I think, I think Laura Barclay helped coordinate that, yeah. And it didn't seem to be used much and, or needed much.
I just wanted to, thanks, Eric. You know, I think that I went to the open house that was here and the crowd wasn't that big. I'm not sure if that was a day of.
The weather's been great too.
Debate or not.
It's always a challenge.
Some people might find the parking open house better than the vice presidential debate.
I did, yeah.
But the one thing I wanted to mention, and I'm going to circulate the survey again to people on the, in the neighborhood list, but the question of trying to find a way to work with Washington DC, I think, has to be something that we push on and, you know, whether they'll want to do it, I guess is a separate question. I've done some outreach there as well, but I think in particular, since, you know, as mentioned, some of these restaurants aren't even in Maryland, I think we've got to try to find a way to collaborate with them to some extent on this, so.
Definitely.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. The form that you've, you're showing here, is that something that people can type in on screen and then, and then electronically send, or do you require it to be?
Yeah, it goes right in.
Yeah.
It goes right in? You don't have to print it out or anything?
No, no.
Okay, good.
You can, these are, I don't know if you guys can see the same thing I'm looking at, but you can sort of click on the boxes that you like of the various things. You can enter text here and then we just ask for email so that we can keep folks who have commented up to date on progress.
Great, I can't imagine you could make it any, any easier than that. That's, that's wonderful. Was there any material difference in the types of comments and questions you got between the two, two meetings? Because one of them was held at the rec center and one was held on this side of town.
It's a good question. I would say not really. Actually, some of the folks who came to the meeting at the rec center had interest in parts of town that weren't around the rec center. You know, we, we, one of the reasons we did it two nights on two, two different places is just recognizing that sometimes people are busy and we also wanted to be in different parts of town. So we actually, I think at both evenings, it wasn't necessarily that the attendance were reflective of that particular neighborhood, or at least their concerns weren't limited to that, that particular neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Great, terrific, all right, and I think you have a part two, right?
Yeah, there's a part two. And it's also parking, but it's somewhat unrelated and this was in your, your packet. This is really just a piece of housekeeping on the city code. And there's an ordinance and there's a first and second reading of it on November 2nd and 16th. Basically, what the ordinance does is it modifies and actually eliminates a substantial piece of the city code related to parking meters and parking meter zones, primarily because all of this information right now is in the administrative regulations. And that happened in 2010 and then was updated in 2013. And the information actually in the administrative regulations is correct and what's still in the code is incorrect. And so it was really just a piece of housekeeping. And when we were going through a lot of the parking work, this was something that we noted as something that still needed to happen that hadn't been basically finished. So that's, that's what it is.
Cool. Anybody have any questions on that?
No, ma'am.
That looks good. All right, any other updates you have for us?
Uh, no, no.
When are we going to get new parking meters, the credit card ones? Do we know?
The meters won't change, there will be a sticker on the meters that have.
Oh, they have the.
That you can do the phone. That's a question for the police.
Oh, okay.
Any day now.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, we've finished all the paperwork stuff, so.
Great.
Can I just ask, I thought we were not going to have the meters and so there would be more spaces because you have the kiosk.
That was a recommendation that the consultants had made in the study, but there's been no.
Okay, so that could still happen.
Right, that will probably come back in the January presentation.
Great, perfect, thank you so much.
Yep.
All right, our next work session is a discussion of opting out of proposed Montgomery County code provisions regarding vacant property registrations and foreclosed property registrations.
And I'll, I'll take this one. Right now, the county council and particularly under the push of Councilmember Tom Hucker, have been trying to put forward some vacant property and foreclosure registry-type bills before the county council. So there's two bills that are before them. There's Montgomery County Bill 3816, which is Housing and Building Maintenance Standards Foreclosed Property Registration Penalty. And there's MC Bill 3916, Housing and Building Maintenance Standards Registration of Vacant Property. These two bills are scheduled for a public hearing before the county council on October 18th at 1:30 PM in Rockville. The, the bills are very similar to, especially the vacant property item, is very similar to language that the city had already adopted when we went through and identified the need for vacant property registry. But the, ours is a little bit more specific on some of the standards. And so what we would want to do is to opt out, if this passes for the county, we would want to opt out so that our language stands for the city, which is something that we can do. The council could decide to, you know, not have it, not have our bill, our language apply to us and go through the county. But as I said, ours is a bit more specific and we had quite a lot of discussion about what those standards should be. So when I saw that these bills were before the county council, I had our legal counsel review them to see, you know, what their recommendation was. Their recommendation was that if they're passed, that we should opt out. On the foreclosed property registration penalty, it implements Montgomery County's authority to oppose a $1,000 civil penalty or fine for failure to register a foreclosed property on the Maryland Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation Foreclosed Property Registry, which is online. And that does not conflict with the city, but what we were recommended to do was to pass a similar bill for us so that we could get the money as opposed to having the money go to Montgomery County. And so, again, if the county council would proceed with this, it would make some sense, or even if they don't, it would make some sense for the city to pursue similar language that applies for the city properties. So it seemed pretty straightforward, but because we'd had lots of discussion about vacant properties, I'm pleased that the county's taking it up, but we've already kind of been there, so. We did it.
So that $1,000 fine, that would be placed on the lender, the board? Because once the property's been foreclosed, the ownership transfer is back to the mortgage chain.
Right, I'd have to, I'd need to look at the, the actual language here.
And I would just like to say for the record, I, I support us opting out. When the current director of the county's housing department came aboard, I asked him about foreclosures and all these issues, and he said it wasn't a problem for the county. So it's interesting that now the county council is trying to put forward, you know, this legislation. And also want to remind everyone that foreclosures is a strategic engagement initiative for MML, so this is a big problem throughout the state of Maryland. And I think Tacoma Park, we've already been in front of it, so trying to let the county take over, I don't think is the best way to do it.
In the, thank you, in the, in the paperwork for the bill, it, you know, it says that if a purchaser does not register the property on the foreclosure property registry, that they are to be fined $1,000. And it notes that, that many of the purchasers are banks or out-of-state investors and they wait. From the different discussions that I've heard, sometimes it is hard to pin somebody down, but to the extent that people could pin someone down, we could fine them $1,000.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I, I support both these, uh, proposed actions and it seems to make sense. The, the thing that, and I don't know this since I'm just reading what's here, not, not the whole bill, the thing is, is that the banks are the main culprits, that they, they've got a, a mortgageor who has failed to pay and so they foreclosed and evicted. But for some reason, the banks don't want to go through the process of actually registering or title, you know, redoing the recordation of it so that it ends up, I guess maybe it's to avoid recordation, taxes, I don't know what it is. But a $1,000 fine is a lot of money if it involved a property owner in the city. Right, that's a lot of, that would be a big hit. But for a bank who's dealing with oodles of these houses.
It could be $1,000 a day. I mean, if somebody were really.
Doesn't say a $1,000 a day, is it a $1,000 a day?
That's, that's what is in the language.
Oh, it is.
Now, obviously, that's one of those things where the judge would have some discretion and they, they tend to do that. When we have other fines that are per day, often that doesn't happen, but, you know, in real life.
Yeah, so the goal is to kind of get.
This is to call attention to it.
Okay, good.
To be a stick.
Well, this is a nice, if it, a dollar a day or whatever, a $1,000 a day, it adds up.
Yeah.
Pretty soon you're talking about real money.
Okay. Something nice to go into our housing reserve, our affordable housing reserve.
That's right, that's right.
Good, anything else on this?
No, I think it's a pretty straightforward thing, but just because it's been a topic that we've been talking about, about housing, you know, we'd been following it and I thought that the recommendation made sense.
Perfect, great, thank you very much for bringing to our attention. And I'd ask the C. Clerk on our long. Uh, and I'd ask a C clerk on our long-term, like, running agenda that we keep, maybe just putting a placeholder in there regarding the foreclosure one, so we keep it-
Right.
Kind of just in the back of our minds.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Let's see, our final item this evening is a-
Who said eight-thirty?
I know. You said eight-thirty?
I'll talk really, really slowly.
All right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. This is an update on our Tacoma Junction redevelopment project.
Uh, so I, I'll speak to, um, three different kind of components of the, the project, um, and provide updates. Uh, first, the development agreement, um, and, and that process. Uh, second, the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Process Advisory Committee, the TJCCPAC. Um, and then, uh, a brief update on the ongoing discussions between NDC and the co-op, um, uh, with the goal of arriving at, uh, a letter of intent. Um, as far as the development agreement goes, as required by the DA, NDC submitted, uh, project schedule, which was vetted by staff and our development attorney, uh, attorney, and subsequently approved. Um, it's very detailed. It's up on the website. It includes, um, all the milestones, um, that will be reached throughout the project. Some of the noteworthy ones are submission of the LOI, which is expected on November 29th, followed shortly thereafter, um, with a submission of, uh, a, a concept design, um, which NDC hopes to have approved sometime in early 2017. It'll take about two years to navigate the development review process, and, um, hopefully, construction commences in late 2018, uh, or early 2019. Um, with regard to the TJCCPAC, which has not yet come up with a new name, as I understand it, um, they've met three times to date, and at their last meeting, they decided to, um, which was held on September 27th, they decided to hold off on scheduling dates for the community meetings, uh, until NDC and the co-op are able to come to some conclusions regarding the site design. That way, uh, the community has some parameters, um, uh, that they can consider when they're providing input, uh, into the process. And, um, finally, with regard to the ongoing discussions between NDC and the co-op regarding a letter of intent, um, NDC and the co-op have formally met three times now, uh, including yesterday, to continue discussions about the site, um, and in order to arrive at a letter of intent, which again, uh, the city expects, uh, a submission of an LOI by NDC, um, by November 29th. Um, Mayor Stewart and I actually sat in as observers at yesterday's meeting. Um, based on the reports we've received from NDC and on our observations, it appears that forward progress is being made. Both NDC and the co-op have brought their consultants to the table to hash through issues related to site design, deliveries, parking, and continuity of operations. Um, the next meeting has yet to be scheduled, but it sounded like it was going to be held in the next week or two weeks. Um, they had to, um, regroup and, and, um, get their calendars, uh, aligned. Um, we're really hoping that that happens as soon as possible, uh, because, uh, the clock is ticking. November 29th will be here before we know it. I would, uh, finally note that NDC has contracted with a new architect, Street Sense, uh, who I believe will be very beneficial, um, not only to the process, but also to the project. They specialize in urban and suburban retail design, um, and they put a very heavy emphasis on environmental design and place-making. Um, and from what I heard from a representative at the meeting yesterday, um, it's not just their client whose interests they think about. You know, their name goes on, um, goes on a building. Um, and so they're concerned about the environment, the, the, in addition to the client, the environment, the tenants, um, um, and things like that. And, um, I, I was very impressed with what I saw from Street Sense. Um, so I, again, I think that they'll be beneficial to the process and to the project, um, and we look forward to continued forward, um, progress being made. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, I think you did a very good, uh, recap. I just underscored that, um, at the meeting yesterday, it was my first time meeting, uh, representatives from, uh, Street Sense, and, um, it was, I think they were brought in excellent energy to the room, um, and a new set of eyes, uh, to the project. So I'm looking forward to seeing what happens over the next couple of weeks. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Regarding the letter of intent, you said that both parties are coming together, and they're, they're working on it. Do we have any sketches? Do we have any designs that we can see about how to resolve these lingering problems, or?
That's, that's the crux of the discussion that they had yesterday, and, uh, one that they had in the previous meeting. They're, they're trading, um, they're, they're, they're trading ideas and, uh, working together to come to a, a conclusion, um, of, of mutually agreeable design. So they are, um, entertaining lots of different, uh, drawings and ideas, um, but they have not come to any conclusions yet.
Uh, is there a, a hard deadline on when something will be, not the LOI, but the design, some type of sketch, be on paper for, for the parties to review?
I, so, um, yes, the, they don't necessarily need to have a completed design or drawing in order to, to arrive at an LOI, as long as, you know, there's an understanding that they, um, both mutually agree to. Um, so, uh, you know, when they have a final design that they're ready to share, um, hopefully, we'll see it. And when we do, we can, we can certainly share it with you and, um, and make it public. I think that there's-
It, it then needs to go for community discussion. I mean, that's the, that's the, you know, it's not going to be a final sign.
The, the, um-
Yeah, but-
Yeah.
We, I mean, we need to, you would think that since this has been the crux for both parties, there would be something on paper that-
It's part of the negotiation, so it's-
Yeah, it's something, I mean, they are trading lots of different-
There's lots of paper.
Thing, yeah, paper and ideas and things like that, back and forth. So there's, you know, nothing that I would point to as, at, yet, as the, the solution, the answer. Um, but they're entertaining all sorts of, um, all sorts of possibilities.
And there's also, um, a traffic engineer who is part of these discussions, just to-
So, and, and they actually have started doing, um, traffic counts, but they obviously can't do a traffic impact study until they have a better idea about square footage and use and things like that.
Okay. Uh, and regarding Street Sense, they're a great firm. They did the art district on Route One.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's extremely successful. They are, uh, I guess you'd call a, a comprehensive firm.
Mm-hmm.
They have brokerage, design, um, they provide all services for clients. Uh, they do, um, retail marketing studies for the District of Columbia. So they're a really good firm.
Yeah, I thought I had, I thought I was familiar with their name, and I remembered that they'd done some really great work down in Durham, North Carolina, um, revitalizing parts of the downtown area there. Um, and it's been tremendously successful there.
So it's good to see that, uh, NDC brought them on. Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Culver?
Yeah, can you clarify one, uh, aspect of this? Um, so when the LOI is complete, that's when the advisory committee is going to get more active again in terms of the, uh, reviewing the, the design and so on? Is that, is that your understanding?
I think that's correct. Ms. Grimsby can speak to it better than I. She's the liaison to the consultation committee.
I think they're just calling themselves the TJAC now, from what I saw.
The TJAC?
Tacoma Junction Advisory Committee.
All right.
We have experts on acronyms, so there's the T-J-A-C. Anyway, um, the, the task of the committee, as you all know, is to set up the community engagement opportunities. And NDC's identified four particular areas. I think you've had an, an update on this before. And public realm, and sort of the facade and, uh, site, and, um, what happened was they had tentatively scheduled dates for this fall, thinking getting community input at, uh, as early, at the appropriate time, but early in the appropriate time would be the best way to do it. And in the last meeting and conversation with NDC, realized that there are critical pieces that aren't in place yet in order to invite the community in to talk about them. And so with NDC representatives, the committee kind of talked through if it made sense to just hold off. And everyone finally agreed it made more sense to wait until those critical pe- pieces are known, and then you can invite the community in to talk about them. So it looks like those community meetings are probably going to be after the New Year.
So is that, how does that mesh with the project schedule that was-
It will probably create a delay of a couple of months. And so, um, NDC's already been in touch with me about coming back, because they are, um, required to come back if they miss a main task deadline, uh, with a revised schedule. So they have not missed any main task deadlines, but they're anticipating that because everything is dependent on the discussions between NDC and the co-op, that it will delay those public engagement meetings.
And Jason, otherwise, I mean, it seems like when they're not in these meetings, they're exchanging information. So it's not as if nothing happens between meetings, right? The parties are-
Yes, that's correct. Um, and, and Mayor Stewart can attest to it also. I think, um, it was very clear to us yesterday that, um, the, the issues and drawings and things like that that they were discussing yesterday, they had been conversing about, um, for at least a few weeks prior to today, or to yesterday's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, but my question is, is that s- since the issues, the salient issues have dealt with the loading dock, uh, the access for trucks to a loading dock, if that's what they're going to do, uh, the availability of, uh, adequate parking during construction, and the, uh, whole business of business continuity, which is, probably doesn't affect design as much as the other, uh, issues do, that, as a result of that, and when, and assuming that they, they do come up with a letter of intent, it seems, wouldn't it seem likely, though, at that point, that there won't be a whole lot of room for community, the rest of the community, or the residents, uh, to come back and sort of say, "Well, we don't like this design," or words to that effect, because it'll be pretty much something, a part of that, a good, an influential part of it will be pretty much locked into the letter of intent, um, to the extent that the letter of intent talks about, uh, these physical aspects. I'm just wondering if, if, if you think that that's true or not.
Uh, well, I think, you know, NDC and the co-op have to come to an agreement, um, on a design that meets the needs of NDC and the co-op.
Right.
And when I mentioned parameters earlier, that would be established, um, that's what I was referring to is, is, you know, it, it won't be a blank slate. There will be parameters and lots of opportunities for, um, input from the community about, you know, more than just things around the margins, but things like, uh, you know, how, how green features will be, uh, will be a part of the, the plan, what the, you know, where the public spaces would be, and, um, and, you know, what would be included in those public spaces. Um, you know, things, the, the, the facade, um, of the building, things like that. So there's lots of areas where there will be, um, uh, lots of room for community input and, um, and help in decision making.
And I, I would just say, given our conversations and what is in the, um, development agreement, this location, the development, this is a partnership between the city and, and D.C. moving forward. Um, NDC needs to have, as we say, an LOI with the co-op. But this is very much the city, the residents of the city designing and figuring out what's going to go there. So, um, you know, in this conversations that Jason and I have been observers in, NDC is fully aware of that. There's been references to, you know, we, this has to go back to the city council. This has to go out to the community to be reviewed. So we, you know, we're hoping they will come to this LOI, and we will move forward. Um, but nothing is set in stone, um, for that. It, it does need to go through this process. Um, and NDC has been underscoring that, um, in these discussions.
Yeah, so that kind of suggests that, uh, the community input process is, is, is going to be a little bit of pushing this way, and pushing this way, and pushing this way, as the various interests sort of try and figure out how to make, to satisfy not only the, uh, NDC and the city council, and a, and the some of the, and various numbers of the residents, but also the co-op itself. I mean, it's just, I'm not saying it's not going to work. Obviously, it will work. It just, it may take a little while to-
I mean, I think we've all discussed that there are definitely trade-offs. It's n- not a large space, and there will be, um, decisions that will have to be made, and, you know.
And I would also just note that I, that's part of the charge of the, the consultation committee is to figure out the process, um, for gathering community input and how it's used.
Well, my, my thought, thinking is, is that as long as lots of paper is being exchanged and conversations going on, that's, that seems, uh, to be a good thing. Um, and, and I gather from what you've, what I've heard you say, it sounds like there's room for optimism here, that we're, we're actually making progress. Would that-
Yeah, I think so.
I guess that's your sense?
I think so. And I think, and I think both, uh, representatives from both NDC and the co-op seem optimistic as well.
Well, that is cheering news. Um, I, I would like it, I don't know about the rest of my councilmen, my colleagues, but I would at some point like to have a chance to, uh, be an observer in these conversations. Just, um, just to sort of see for myself. I don't know if that's possible, but-
Sure.
Yeah. I just need to know, I mean, whoever wants to do this would need to kind of get informed of, of when the opportunities arise, and what, how we're supposed to conduct ourselves, so we don't step on any, you know, say something really dumb.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, the, because there's not a facilitator that's kind of keeping notes, it, it is a little bit awkward when the city staff or council members are there, and so, um, it's, it's very much an observer role. And that's about it.
Any other questions or anything? No? All right. So, um, I think we're done for the evening. Um, thank you, everyone. Um, as we said, many of us will be at the MML conference starting tomorrow. Um, but we will be back next Wednesday. Thank you. We're adjourned.